Ding, Tuckahoe, and welcome to the Wednesday, November 4th, 2015, meeting of the Village of Tuckahoe's Attorney Board of Appeals. And first thing we're going to do is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everyone for coming in and tuning in. I'm going to very, very briefly on a completely non-consistent message. I just watched a very interesting show on the Civil War when I see the flag. And General Sherman's written comments about President Lincoln, the first time he met him, he was, he had a lot of questions about President Lincoln's abilities. And then the second time he met him, which was after President Lincoln said he felt he was probably the most tired man on earth, which really struck me very hard. And after hearing that quote from Lincoln, and then what General Sherman, after conquering the South, meeting with President Lincoln and General Grant, his comments about the integrity of, and the complete love of country that Abraham Lincoln had, really struck me hard, and I really felt compelled to say that. Okay, so what we have now is, we're going to ask Nancy, please call the roll.
Member Ringwald.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Jackman.
Present.
Chairman Gallo.
Present, thank you very much. Okay, so we have tonight, the first thing I'm going to call, just so the public knows, we're a little late again, and we really strive not to be, but we've had a very intense work session. And I just, please, hope the public understands that our tardiness is not for any reason other than the fact that we've had some intense conversations, strong questions by this terrific board that I'm so proud to be a member of. So I'm going to call 10 Fisher Avenue as a return. Please come to the microphone, thank you. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Les Marin, Marin and Mizanti, 5 Westchester Avenue, Poundridge, New York, 10576. I'm here for the applicant, Martine's Fine Bake Shop, location 10 Fisher Avenue. We were here last month, we went into some detail, or a lot of detail, about asking this board, for our application, asked this board for an interpretation. It's my understanding that the board is not closing the hearing this evening, so therefore, what, all I was going to do was sort of summarize and recap what I had done to try to emphasize certain points. There's no reason for me to do that tonight if you're not going to be closing the hearing. However, there was a request on the record by the chairman for certain information on writing, in writing, which I do have to provide to you.
This is about the minutes, yeah, I did not call for the approval of the minutes because we did have some issues with them. So counsel, counsel for the village.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was not about the minutes. This is, this was in response to some of the questions the board had.
Okay. And we're going to redo the minutes, we're going to work on those minutes as far as what's been addressed by the applicant. Do I need to make a motion to hold the minute approval over?
You could just hold it over, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I don't need to address that at this time? Okay, so we're going to hold the minutes over to December meeting, and as I've told the other members, I will not be here for the December meeting, but Member Scousa, who has his own business, as a self-employed person, volunteer, was unable to make tonight's meeting. I met with him this morning at 5:00 a.m., and we did review some of the things that are going on, and he assured me that he'll be here in December to handle the meeting. So what we could just do is just hold the, we don't need to, a motion to hold the approval? No?
No, just go over to the December, December hearing.
Okay, fine. I apologize, counsel, for interrupting you, I just wanted to make sure.
Just if I may quickly run through the letter. At your October 14th, 2015, meeting, you requested certain additional information be provided in writing in connection with the above-noted application, which is the Martine's application.
Yes, I recall, thank you.
Following is in response to your specific request, breakdown of business, 80 percent walk-in retail customers, 18 percent specialized pastries and cakes delivered by Martine's to their Scarsdale location, and 2 percent mini pastries delivered by Martine's to two local country clubs. You also asked about, to describe deliveries by Martine's. All deliveries are made by one of Martine's two small panel trucks, the vans are loaded inside the building and leave from the back of the store. The deliveries of pastries and special cakes to Martine's Scarsdale location are made at 4:30 p.m. every other day. The deliveries of mini pastries are done to two local country clubs between 12:00 p.m. and 3:00 p.m., and that's generally twice a week. As for the deliveries to Martine's, because you were concerned about things that came into Martine's, all of those deliveries are to the back of the store, trucks park on Columbus Avenue, and deliveries are moved by hand truck or cart to the back of the store. Milk is delivered twice a week, that's Tuesdays and Thursdays, and these days it's at approximately 7:30 a.m. Produce is delivered twice a week, that's on Monday and Friday, between 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Flour, sugar, chocolate, and other items necessary for their business and baking are delivered once a week on Thursdays, and that's between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. And paper goods and cleaning supplies are ordered and delivered as needed, and it's generally twice a month, and that company's delivery date is on a Thursday, so they come on Thursdays. And the last item that they require to have their business are shopping bags for carrying out things, and they order enough that they only need deliveries twice a year of the shopping bags. And that's basically the list of their deliveries to, their deliveries from, and the breakdown, and those are the questions that you had asked to be addressed in writing. And I have nothing further this evening unless the board has some questions for.
Any questions from members of the board, any references?
If there are any other issues that might be raised, we might appreciate the opportunity this evening to respond to them instead of holding off till your next meeting.
No, thank you, this is what I was looking for, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Counsel, sorry. I want to say that I really appreciate your efforts in the work session, and it is something that a board such as I rely on the input from the applicant, and to have a feeling of level of comfort that the input from the applicant is, you know, straight up and straightforward to us. We will take this, digest it, and meet with the building department in order to review this and get their opinion, and should they have any questions, I'm sure that our counsel will relay them to you.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, what I'm going to do now is, we have a, the public hearing is in a pause to be continued, so I'm going to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on 10 Fisher Avenue. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the public hearing is reopened on 10 Fisher. Is anyone that would like to say anything? Yes.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Rocco Salerno, attorney for Crestwood Station Plaza Company, which owns the property located at 269 and 273 Columbus Avenue.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there, and I just want to be 100% clear, because we have a situation where these properties are on a corner. And the property in question is on Fisher, which is a road that travels, I believe, east and west. But when you say Columbus, that is, travels north and south, but that would be encroaching in the corner, so everyone at home understands, this is the, what you're referring to is the property that is adjoining it in an angle. Would I be correct in saying that?
Yes, but also, my client owns the property upon which a driveway easement is located, that Martine's has access to the garage and the basement area, which is the subject of this application.
So this is, I really want to go slow because I really want this board to understand myself and any member of the public. So what we're referring to is a driveway, now I've seen it, it is a curvature, I think there's some apartments or offices above it, but there's an access from Columbus into the back area of the Fisher Avenue buildings.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the only reason I've appeared before the board right now is Mr. Marin has provided the board with some percentages of business done on premises, off premises, and I would request that the applicant be provided to produce some documentary proof of these percentages, of these numbers that he has presented to the board. Just throwing out 18 percent of this, 2 percent of that, I respectfully submit is wholly insufficient.
Counsel for the village, opinion and requests, please.
Well, this is, again, this board's acting as a quasi-judiciary here, so you're looking for information to make a determination.
To be perfectly frank, if I can cut you off, I tend to agree. I appreciate what the applicant has given us as far as their percentage of businesses, and that is their claim, and any use variance, I think, are we, we're in a use variance area? Is that correct?
It's an interpretation.
In, of a use variance?
No.
No, of an area variance?
No, of a definition of our code.
A definition of the code.
Whether this is a retail space or a manufacturing space, per our code.
Mm-hmm. And if someone wanted to do manufacturing in this area, would they require a use variance?
Special permit.
Just only special permit?
And there's certain, there's very specific rules about that special permit, so if they look for relief of those rules or those requirements, then you might be getting into a use variance issue.
So we're close. We're close on that, in my opinion. We're close on the use variance, no?
Not yet.
No?
First, you have to make a determiner.
We have to make a determination.
They're here for interpretation.
The reason why I go there is because I know that in a use variance, financials are required, or could be requested, but not in area variance.
Correct.
As I said in the last meeting, this is a new grounds for this board, and we want to make sure we, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's. Member Jackman, would you like to say something?
If I may, what is your client's ultimate goal during this process? What would your client like to see as a result of your presence here, essentially?
My client would like to see Martine's Bakery continue to be a thriving business in the Village of Tuckahoe. However, my client would like to see the manufacturing aspect of this business terminated because of the havoc it's wreaking upon my client's property and the easement area. There's a tremendous amount of traffic, Mr. Marin had addressed the issue of various deliveries. There are tractor trailers delivering pallets of goods to this property. And as I said at the last meeting, we have no problem with Martine's Bakery. It's a fine establishment, makes a wonderful product, but it's just a victim of its own success. It's outgrown the space.
May I, may I ask, I mean, the deliveries they're providing here, none of these look excessive to me on paper. Do you have any proof showing that these deliveries are inaccurate?
I haven't seen the schedule.
Well, as Mr. Marin read aloud, deliveries by Martine's are two small panel vans that deliver to Scarsdale every other day, so you have two small panel vans every two days. They have a delivery of mini pastries to country clubs twice a week. So those are deliveries out, and then deliveries in, they're saying they have milk, which I assume is not a pallet of milk, it's probably a smaller amount, twice a week, Tuesday and Thursday. Produce delivered twice a week, we can assume that's a larger bit, but again, only two days a week. And then flour, sugar, chocolate, et cetera, once a week, so we're looking at essentially, they're saying, one delivery per day, you know, roughly throughout the week. And do you feel that that's inaccurate?
I believe that's inaccurate, and I believe my client, who's present here this evening, is prepared to dispute that, but I'd like to also add that the applicant did advise this board that its Scarsdale location is self-sufficient, does all its own baking needs except for, I can't quote the applicant, but something about one particular pastry. We have since determined that the Scarsdale location has nothing but a convection oven and is not producing any product whatsoever, and that the product is coming entirely from the Tuckahoe location.
Okay, I mean, I would, I appreciate that as well as a separate issue. On this issue of the deliveries, which seems to be the major inconvenience to your client, you're saying that you can dispute these with some backup? Okay.
Come to the microphone, please, state your name and address for the record.
Sandra Arno, 273 269 Columbus Avenue, Tuckahoe.
Go right ahead. Take your time, we're, there's no rush at all. Yes, you can approach the board and give anyone and everyone anything.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Arno, and I am the property manager for Coco Management.
Which is the?
We are the owners of Crestwood Station Plaza, which is located at 269 273 Columbus Avenue.
Which has the driveway easement.
We have the driveway easement, which is between the two buildings. The easement allows Martine's the right-of-way strictly to the driveway. It does not enable them to park on the driveway, it doesn't enable them to have any deliveries on the driveway. At the last meeting, I was not able to attend, but I did watch it, and there was a discussion about the usage of the basement before Martine's took over, and there was a question of what the basement had been used for, and they didn't know.
Okay, let's go slow. So you're familiar with this particular property for how long?
Very, very well.
For how long?
16 years.
So you've been the manager for?
I started off with Mr. Coco as the bookkeeper, and I slowly worked my way up, and I'm currently the full property manager.
So you've been, in addition to the financial paperwork for this property, you've also noticed what's been going on as far as the prior, before Martine's was there? Would I be correct?
Yes, I was there when Jerry had it, and I was there when Michael had it.
Okay. Proceed.
Okay, so you'll see that I have a letter here from Anthony Gizzo, that he, along with Everlasting Painting, rented the garage and the basement area from Jermell.
Okay, okay, go slow, please.
I'm sorry, I do talk.
Jermell, we don't know who that is.
Jermell is the owner of the building.
Which building?
The Martine's building.
Okay.
They own the Martine's, the liquor store, and the pharmacy.
Okay.
So the garage, and there's a basement storage area, which are now used by Martine's as well, they go underneath the liquor store.
Yes.
As well as the pharmacy, and then there is a basement area underneath Martine's.
And, okay, let's just go very slow. I just, we really want to understand.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I just want to go slow. So the basement underneath the liquor store, was that always part of the bakery, or was it just recently part of it? To the best of your knowledge?
Actually, I spoke with Anthony, and.
This is Mr. Gizzo, Anthony Gizzo.
Anthony Gizzo, and.
And he, but, just don't, he is Crestwood Taxi, which is.
No, 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 that's a different, that's a different, yeah, he's different.
Okay.
It's a big family. He actually rented the garage and the basement underneath the liquor store and the pharmacy.
In the past?
Up until 2009.
Okay.
And Everlasting had the space underneath Martine's.
And for automotive?
Painting. Oh, for Anthony?
Anthony.
Anthony, Anthony does gardening and landscaping, so he used it for storage.
All right.
Okay, any questions on that?
So, just so, so he had it up to 2009, is that what you said?
Actually, he was there when Martine's moved in.
Okay, and then, so he just had it, and then he gave it up, and Martine's looked it over?
Uh, yes.
Okay. But you were there witnessing what was going on prior to 2009?
Yes.
Okay. To the best of your knowledge, what was the delivery truck situation in that driveway at that time?
Nothing that I noticed. My desk faces the window, so if you're the driveway, I would be looking at you. And I would never, never noticed anything when Anthony was there, and then even when Martine's first took over, nothing.
And today?
It's a lot.
A lot of what?
It's a lot, a lot.
A lot of what?
A lot of traffic, a lot of traffic.
Truck.
No, actually, we stopped the truck traffic, that has stopped.
How?
We stopped that because we told them they could no longer come down the driveway.
So there's no more truck drivers?
We do not allow it.
But.
But they come down with hand carts, they come down with pallets.
Go a little slower.
Hand carts and pallets.
So, wait, 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 and if anyone, and my members want to chime in, it's perfectly okay. So what I want to understand now is that the truck traffic has been stopped, but it.
In the driveway.
In the driveway, but it still continues, is that what you're saying?
Oh, it's on Columbus Avenue, absolutely.
So the trucks.
And they block the driveway.
And they bring the product in on pallets?
On pallets.
To the best of your knowledge, and you're telling us, you know, we don't have you as a sworn testimony, but to the best of your knowledge, that's what's happening, and there has been a difference, what year, if you were to guess?
Since I noticed it, probably, the, I'm going to say more towards like the end of 2013 I noticed the increase.
Okay. So the trucks were coming in in 2013, or?
Yes.
Yes, and then there was a issue raised with them by you, or?
By me.
By you?
By me.
Personally?
By me personally, well, by me, the property manager.
Okay, okay, fine. And so my question then becomes is, were the Martine's Bakery people receptive to your complaints?
Um, well, to the trucks, they were receptive, well, because the truck, the delivery trucks, the drivers were receptive. We have a property maintenance gentleman on grounds, and he would stop them immediately and not let the drivers on, so they were.
Okay, so, when you say "on," you mean the trucks coming into the driveway?
Yes.
From Columbus?
Mm-hmm.
So he, your maintenance man said, you cannot bring these trucks in?
Correct.
Because you're, because I'm guessing you're disrupting, they would be disrupting the activity.
Yeah.
So they agreed, they complied?
They complied, but the Martine's, but Martine's themselves did not comply with their own deliveries at first.
What do you mean?
They continued to park their cars on the property, even us.
Well, why can't they do that?
Well, because we have our own tenants that park their cars on the parking lot. It's not a big parking lot, it's not a big driveway, they block it.
So they do not have.
And they do not have, they do not have rights to the blacktop.
To park.
To park.
But you said they had a right.
And the lot is.
Sorry, to have a right-of-way into that.
Only to their driveway, not mine. And it is posted.
Let's go slow.
It is posted, no parking.
So can they, can they drive down that alley between the building?
And then they have to go directly down their driveway.
Okay.
They are not to stay on the.
They're not to stop on the blacktop, or, I understand.
No. And it continued until one day when I asked a driver to move his car, and he refused that.
A parked car, I just want to go slow.
A parked car on the blacktop.
Okay, there's a lot of blacktop.
Uh, blacktop blocking their driveway, so the, they were on our blacktop in front of their driveway, that's how it would be parked.
You're not allowed to park.
There's pictures.
Okay. All right. And this was when?
November, October 2014.
Okay, continue.
I blocked them in physically.
Were the police called?
The police were called. Yuval came out, he explained to the police officer that Bill Williams himself told him that the Coco property was public property. He was then informed that it was not, and that the property is posted, private parking, and that he would be towed, and it did stop after that.
But Martine does have the right-of-way to come through with pallets of food, as you've depicted in these photos.
They have the right to come down with the pallets, correct.
Okay.
But they do not have the right to leave the pallets and block traffic.
Thank you.
If I could ask, is there anything governing hours of delivery within the village?
No.
Because there are a few of the pictures here, 5:32 in the morning, I cannot imagine my children being woken up at 5:32 in the morning by a massive delivery.
I can actually answer that as well.
This is a large delivery.
Are there?
There's another one at 4:20 in the morning.
Are there residences?
I did meet with Chief Costanza about that.
The noise ordinance does govern deliveries as far as noise, it doesn't say you can't, but you can't exceed a noise level while you're doing those deliveries.
Does the reverse beep exceed the noise ordinance, to the best of your knowledge, Bill?
That I don't know, what else?
I just want to know, to the other board members, there's a 4:20 in the morning delivery, and a 5:30 in the morning delivery.
But.
And there are residences on the second and third floors?
Yes.
There are residences, there are apartments.
Yes.
I mean, one of the things we're trying to wrestle with for the public's knowledge is, you know, where is the balance here between the benefit to the applicant or the interpretation to the applicant versus the detriment to the neighborhood? And that's, I think, personally, that's what I am trying to wrestle with.
We even had.
And I want to be fair to both. We stress this in the work session, that we really want to be fair to both. Go ahead, proceed.
We even had a tractor trailer hit the building, trying to back into the building, trying to back into the driveway.
And this was prior to you explaining?
This was after, this was November 200.
This was after they had already started doing the hand truck delivery?
Mm-hmm.
They still tried to get down the driveway?
Absolutely.
And do you know what time that was, if I, just, if you were to guess?
It was probably 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay.
Somewhere around there, I would guess. And we tried to stop him as he was backing in.
Just so the public knows, we are, this board is looking at 8x10s, multiple 8x10s. However, I'm still not seeing, you know, pertinent shots of, pictures, when there's just shots, I would, of tractor trailers.
Unfortunately, the cameras that we have are limited, we only have cameras located on the warehouse on the property, and even with that.
I mean, I see small vans going in, but.
Those vans belong to our tenant, those, I mean, the vans going in and out of the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We currently only have two, the cameras located on the warehouse on our property, that's the problem. And in order to give you time and date it, also, it didn't come to my attention until I was trying to get this information together, that our cameras weren't set up for pictures. And honestly, I didn't even get this together to be able to print these till 4:00 this afternoon.
All right, okay, okay.
But if you need them, I can work with Crestwood Taxi and get more information.
Well, okay.
This is a lot of information.
I mean, you know, I do have a full-time job. I mean, you know, this, I do have a full-time job. I have a very big job, and, and this is very time-consuming. You know, this is not personal for me. I was born and raised in the town of Eastchester. I, now I'm very grateful to work in the village. I love working there. I love to see new business. Martine's is a wonderful bakery. I was so happy to see it come, and I watched the community grow. It's unfortunate, though, that the impact that it's having on our community, and it's hurting our business, it's hurting my Coco business, these big tractor trailers.
Ow.
Because these tractor trailers, we have, we have businesses, and they take away from their parking. They block their storefronts.
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say businesses, you mean tenants?
Tenant businesses, yes. We have commercial tenant businesses. Okay, so-
We need to share their driveway.
Not the, not just the driveway, but the street parking. And unfortunately, there, I did meet with Chief Costanza regarding the parking, and there are no limitations on these big truck deliveries. And they can park wherever they want. They can even double park if they want. And they do double park right in front of two seventy-three Columbus. And that, to me, is so dangerous, because it's already a dangerous spot. So it's not just to our tenants, it's to our community. I mean, we have to look out for one another. So they're growing, and that's wonderful, they're growing, but the rest of us are suffering. And so we have to look out for one another. So they are, in my opinion, at a factory level, so, yes, stay. But take your, your factory and bring it to Marble Dale. Stay here. Don't leave. Stay here. That's all we're asking.
Point of clarification, you said that the chief of police said tractor trailer can double park on Columbus Avenue?
Yes, he did. I met with him.
One lane.
He can park there. There, yes, he can.
Can they park on Fisher, do you know?
I didn't ask about Fisher. I'm, I'm not on Fisher, so, you know, look, I have feel that, again, I, I do have, I mean, this is not my only property. I have other properties that I have to manage. So, um, this has consumed quite a bit of time. But I do have to look out for my tenants.
Okay.
So I did meet with him because I was concerned, and I was shocked to find out that he could. We've called the police. They've done nothing, and I stopped calling.
Alright, I, and the police are not in the realm of this, uh-
Right, you know, I, I can't, I'm not going to die with them, huh?
Okay, and we, we-
Yeah, it's unfair.
And we got it, we got it.
I could, just one thing.
Yes, remember.
On one of those police reports, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, you mentioned that Mr. Gold said he could not pull the dri, into the driveway with the truck because of the steep angle of the driveway, which I think we can see on the photos, uh, may force baking items or finished cakes to fall. Has, are they now using the, the garage space to load the trucks, or are you still having this where they're parking across the top of the driveway?
They're not using our blacktop. I don't know where they load. There's, there are pastries.
Right, so you're no longer seeing their delivery, the trucks that are going out in your, in your blacktop?
No.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that's-
I have no idea what they do.
So the only issue that's currently ongoing for you that is an inconvenience and-
Is their deliveries.
Is the deliveries.
Correct. The increase in traffic.
Okay.
And you can see the pictures, that they are large pallets and they are large deliveries. And that's just a small sampling.
Okay, but so we're dealing essentially with one issue from your perspective at this point, which is the deliveries. Them parking on the blacktop is no longer an issue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before I call the, uh, attorney, uh, thank you, before I call the attorney, uh, for Martine's up, I'd just like to see if the attorney for, uh, Ms. Coco needs any clarifications.
No, I wouldn't further add, except again, I would request some verification of the numbers or the percentage.
Right, but I'm talking about right now, what has been presented by Ms. Coco. If there's anything that conflicts or you feel needs additional clarification, you're fine with statements that are made on the record.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
I would love to be Mrs. Coco, but I am Mrs. Arnault.
I, I, I apologize. I'm, I'm very sorry. Sorry. It's a, it's a complicated night.
It's okay.
We really appreciate everything you've given and, and intend, and we may need more clarification from you, but-
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I really would like, before I open the public hearing up to further, I would like the attorney or the applicant to, to come up and, and contest anything that was said, since it's right in a-
If I could ask for a specific response, we have four or five letters here. I mean, it's not a few, it's more than that. I'd say six letters from various tenants in those buildings, all, you know, reflecting that deliveries are too early, they're loud, um, things of this nature, if you could respond.
Um, I have absolutely no intention of getting into a tit for tat. This is not the purpose of our application, is for an interpretation of Mr. Williams', um, of Mr. Williams' letter, uh, denying the issuance of permit. Our intent here is not to, to hear complaints about parking, complaints about loading, complaints about right of ways, those are all civil matters.
I agree.
They have the right to call the police. They can call the building inspector. They did that already, which is why we are here. And frankly, three-quarters of what we just looked at, there's no idea what time it was, which was five thirty. Tal has already indicated that the, to her knowledge, she recognizes some of the photos here. One is her flower truck, another, they're all normal-sized delivery trucks. The tractor trailer truck that comes are the paper trucks. I don't know what days those were taken, I don't know when they were taken, but those are the ones that come twice a year, and that's why there's so much there, it's the twice-a-year bags. I'm not going to get into a back and forth, because I, that's clearly not what this board's supposed to be looking at at this time.
I agree.
Um, I also would, if, if you would like us to respond further, whenever Tal or Martine's has gotten, uh, a complaint or something, they've responded. Since our last meeting, they've changed the deliveries. They're no longer five a.m. deliveries, which is why it says seven thirty a.m. for the milk. Because they found out for the first time, a reasonable person would call or ask or complain, not go to the police, not go to the building inspector. That hasn't what happened. When she heard through coming here that there was complaint, the milk deliveries have been changed to seven thirty a.m.
So there's been no discuss, wait, 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 let me just stop you there. To the best of your knowledge, the, your client has never been aware of any complaints?
Correct.
Until now?
And anytime she's had a complaint, she's dealt with it, unless they were completely unreasonable complaints, such, and I'm not even going to go into such-
And I know, I, 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 I strongly agree with you that this board has to be very careful not to slip into a civil matter. And we are not here to, uh, determine a civil dispute. What we're trying to do is evaluate all the information in order to make a judgment as to the building inspector's interpretation.
I, I understand that. I, I mean, for example, I'm looking at the Gizzo letter. I have no idea why that's here. Who cares what happened in two thousand and nine? When he left the building in the back, which is being described as a warehouse, but apparently it's an active woodworking or plumbing shop, it's not a warehouse. And there's vans in and out. We don't want to get into that. If you'd like us to address certain letters that were raised in here, just put it in writing and we'll address the letters.
I agree. I, I completely agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is, uh, still open. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak in this matter, please approach the microphone. Thank you. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen, lady. Um, my name is Dr. Damian Kim. Uh, I have a practice and clinic of Oriental medicine on two seven-one Columbus Avenue. I also have a partnership and a salon at two six-seven Columbus Avenue.
Can you kind of just give us an idea where those are, those are on, on Columbus, in that same building, just around that driveway?
It's, my office is actually, uh, facing the driveway, uh, that's in question, so-
How would it be facing the driveway? I don't, I mean-
I, I'm sorry. One of the windows that I have, uh-
From the side, you mean?
From the north side.
Or on the south of the driveway?
South of the driveway, from the north side.
It joins the driveways, would I would-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, one of the complaints that I have is actually, in the two and a half years that I've been there, I moved in two thousand and thirteen, I believe June or July, I forgot, uh, but-
From another location to this one?
Yes, sir. I came from Scarsdale, uh-
Why'd you come here, if I can ask you?
Just got too busy over there. I was down by the train station in Deport Place.
And you felt Tocco was better?
Oh, yeah, Tocco's much better. This is, I consider my place of, uh, business, and also my second home next to where I live.
I see.
Um, I love the town. I love the people that I actually rent the building from. Uh, the people are very warm, very greeting. A lot different from Scarsdale. Um, one of the things, I'm not too concerned about, um, the business practice per se in a monetary sense. Uh, one of the problems that I have, and I've seen this a lot of times, those tractor trailer trucks, they do double park.
How often?
I've lost count.
Based, if you were to, wild guess. No one's going to hold you to it. Wild guess.
I would say almost about sixty percent of the time when there are patients and clients from the business and all the-
Yeah, but in a week, do you see them more, once a week? Yes.
Yes, I see them more than once a week doing that. Actually, I've called the police and I've issued citations for one of the tra, uh, trailer trucks that were there.
Okay, let me stop you there. Can we get a record of that? I mean, how do we get a record of that, and how do we know that if there are citations, that actually happens to the bakery? There's no way to tell, right?
I, I don't think so. I could ask the chief if that was, but I'm not sure how they-
I just would like to know, the problem is, we don't know whether that tractor trailer's here for the bakery, or whether it's there for some other-
And even if a citation was issued, it would probably be a parking violation, and they wouldn't know why the tractor trailer's parked there, or what they're doing there. It was just, if they're parked illegal, they'd just be issued a citation.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Continue, sir.
Well, one of the things I was concerned about is, uh, there was actually one situation, I don't have any witnesses, but, um, when the tractor trailer was double parked, there was almost an incident of a head-on collision, because it didn't make it into a one-lane traffic. And there was nobody to actually control the traffic floor at that time. And I believe it was around like, um, two o'clock, between one and two o'clock at that time, where the traffic was fairly heavy through Tocco and Columbus Avenue from the north and southbound side. Um, the southbound side was actually open, and the northbound side was actually occupied by that, uh, trailer truck that took up almost two or three spaces.
And this happens how often again? Just remind me.
Uh, at least about fifty percent of the time.
Fifty percent of what time? I mean, I don't-
I, I mean, they usually do deliveries, from what I can tell, uh, from what, when I'm in, in the office.
But again, how often in one week do you happen to notice this?
About two-
Two weeks, three weeks, a month? How often?
Uh, within a week's time, I would say at least once or twice.
Continue, unless anyone has anything, anyone has, continue?
And, uh, at that time, then when that, um, the tractor trailer actually was backing up and it hit the, uh, building, I was actually in the building. One of my patients was in the room that was facing the, uh, driveway there. Uh, it hit it with quite a bit of impact. It actually put the patient into shock and, um, couldn't finish the treatment, and she had to leave. I mean, and also, the hair salon business, when the trailers are there, it takes up about three to four parking areas, and it's very difficult for, we have a lot of older clients.
You understand, and I, I just want you to understand the position that this board is in.
Of course, sir. Yes, I do.
You know, there, there is a, a fine line here, where, uh, the, uh, becomes a civil matter between two parties, and a judge would decide this board is really not there. However, in making the decision whether to, uh, agree with the building inspector's, uh, view of what's going on, we do take this ancillary, at least I do. Uh, and I believe my board does this, this ancillary information cumulative to help us make a decision. But understand that this board is not here to make a determination whether tractor trailers should or should not come in.
Uh, well, my most, my main concern is because as a medical practitioner, and my welfare is for the patients and the people of Tocco, is the amount of impediment that it's, the traffic flow that can actually cause, uh, a possible fatality and a head-on collision.
Okay.
I know it's maybe far-fetched, but, uh-
It's not that it's far-fetched. The decision that, that this board's faced with, this is something that's in our realm, and it's a very tough decision as to whether or not, and we, we, uh, this board is, is, is very concerned about the businesses and is thrilled. You know, uh, speaking personally, frankly, to hear that you come from Scarsdale and settle your business in Tocco is just terrific. I mean, I just-
Well, it's not just one business, sir. It's actually, um, I have opened up another business on the same block, uh, which is a fairly high-end hair salon, which a lot of revenues would actually, um, help.
And that's on Columbus?
Yes, sir. It's actually, uh, it's two six-seven Columbus.
And is that north or south in the alleyway that's in which?
That is south of the alleyway.
South of the alleyway, okay. And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, we have, you know, there are multiple businesses on this, uh, and I, you know, this is separate from, I'm sure you have these individual issues with this, you know, this, this issue that we're talking about. But I mean, there are, what, ten to twelve businesses in that immediate area that are getting deliveries? Who's to say it's not the bar? Who's also parking their truck there and walking around the corner with a hand truck? Is there other places that they, are you guys familiar with other places? Is there no loading zone designated for this commercial district? In the parking lot or anything like that? So all these businesses, the bar, the, uh, pet, I mean, I'm sure the pet salon's not shipping in crates of things, but all these businesses are just double parking and dealing with traffic? I mean, it seems like a general village issue, not just specific to one business, the fact that there's no place for these ten to twelve businesses to unload merchandise?
Yeah, that's the problem. I mean, when it reaches critical mass, then it gets put in our situation.
You've got a massive parking lot there. It seems, I'm, I'm just, this is a, this is secondary to this issue, obviously, but-
Well, I can, sir, I can testify, actually, uh, several times with the trucks that I have seen, I have actually, um, walked along and followed them, and they haven't been delivering to Martine's.
How do you know?
I followed them.
Fi, you-
Physically followed them when they actually parked the trucks and unloaded, and were walking either through the alleyway or around the building.
I mean, as long as they're not blocking the driveway, we have no say on what they're, where they're parking these trucks. I mean, this is just a designation of are they reaching a manufacturing level?
Correct. Again, what this board is doing is an interpretation of Mr. Williams' decision that this is a manufacturing use. So what you really have to be looking at is, you know, one thing that you need to take into consideration is the intensity of the use, you know, is it, does that weigh on the side of manufacturing? It's, it's up to the board to decide, but I think you can look at the intensity, who's, you know, how many deliveries and, and all these other things.
Cumulative.
Whether they're double parked or not, not purview of the support at all.
Right.
And if there is a problem there, um, it's a police matter. They would just need to call the police, and police would enforce that, or the, we can notify the police, and they can keep an eye on it a little closer.
Okay.
Uh, I'd just like to add, I have noticed, um, delivery traffic increase in the past two and a half years that I've been there since I first moved.
Okay, when you say delivery, you mean being delivered to, not, not exiting?
Right, delivery to.
Okay. Alright, well, anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we thank you for coming down on your, on an evening, and, uh, you know, we understand you're a business, and you, you have your own personal time of night for you to, you know, come down and, and, uh, share your, uh, observations with us, is very well appreciated.
Thank you.
Public hearing is still open on, uh, wait a minute. Ten Fisher. Ten Fisher. Is anyone else would like to come up and address the board at this particular time? Seeing none, or, uh, uh, we really have gained a tremendous amount of information on both sides on this, so I'm going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open on Ten Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would that be the December meeting or till January? Are they gonna, because I know, Mr. Chairman, you're not going to be here in December. Is the public hearing going to be continued to January?
Well, how do we, do we push it right to January? It's, it's, I would think that it would be up to, uh, the applicant to agree to wait until January, but he has every right to hear it. Uh, Member Scouso has assured me that he would be here to chair it, uh, so it's really, I don't know if I, we have the power to, to, to do that unless the applicant agrees to wait until, it's a tough month.
I have, um, I, the chairman has indicated he's, I'm going to be out of town on the, uh, the first and second Wednesday of December also, so I'm not available to attend your meeting, so I would just assume you adjourned and continue it to January and not even hear anything in December.
Um, it's fine with me. It's about everyone.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll see you in January. I mean, there's no detriment to your client, nothing is, uh, affecting anybody or the applicants, uh, the, uh, I don't want to call you Ms. Coco, I apologize again. The representative of Coco or the attorney for Coco, do you have any objections to just holding everything over until January? I, I won't be here in December.
And I understand that, and normally I would object, but in deference to, uh, counsel for the applicant, in fact, he's not going to be here, I have no objection.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is something, uh, this is different than we normally see, uh, you know, where someone wants to make a change and, and needs approval, and any delays would, would cost them, and this is unusual, and, and we really want to study this, and I can assure, uh, everyone involved that this is an active board, and we'll continue to study it and, uh, do our best to come with decisions in it here- to come with decisions. And here's any new information that may come about between now and January. But this has gone on for quite a while, so another couple of months, in my opinion, is not gonna hurt anybody. Do I need to, so?
I think you made a motion to carry the public, to continue the public hearing.
So I'll re, I'm making a motion to continue the public hearing until January of 2016, our meeting would be the second Wednesday of the month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're good.
Everyone's here.
Everyone's here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's up to Mr. Chairman, what order you wanna take everyone in?
Um.
Easy one.
Okay, we're gonna call 20 Oakland Avenue Area Variance. Please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Barbuti, architect for Mr. and Mrs. Boyer, 20 Oakland Avenue, Tuckahoe. In front of the board tonight, requesting a variance to the zoning ordinance for front yard setback of approximately thirty inches to construct a roofed portico over an existing front stair platform. They're presently now is an aluminum awning type with the metal posts on it, which is in disrepair, and they're looking to construct something a little bit more permanent to keep the ice off the front stoop.
The only reason is just to keep the ice off?
Maybe make the house look a little better.
Building Department, have any comments?
Just that it's one-tenth of one percent of a variance.
The applicant wanna get out of here quick? Okay, any comments from, or questions from the board members, the architects? Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing on 20 Oakland Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone that needs to come up and say something about this? Seeing none, they make a motion to close the public hearing on 20 Oakland Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is this gonna be done at this time of year, or?
The applicant is looking to do it before the winter.
Okay, and how much time the applicant feel it will take? Roughly? A month? A day?
It shouldn't take any more than, you know, a week.
Good, good. That's, we're always looking, one of the things with all deference, you know, we've had prior applicants.
Right.
Not in something that come to us and say, we're doing it tomorrow, and all of a sudden they don't do it. So on the record, we'd just like you to say that you're gonna get on it right away, right?
Correct.
Okay. Hearing that, I am looking for a motion to approve 20 Oakland Avenue. Is there someone that has one would like?
Yes, I have a motion in the form of a, in the form of a resolution. The Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals, Area Variance Resolution. The application for an area variance requested by Rita Boyer, whose address is 20 Oakland Avenue, New York, Section 42, Block 3, Lot 7, for relief from the following section of the zoning code, 4 dot 2 dot 4 dot 1, front yard. Applicant seeks relief of the front yard setback, which requires twenty-five feet, and the applicant is requesting a 23.08-foot setback. Secra resolution, based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of Secra and its implementing regulations. Two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. And, three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that the negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Recommendation is, for an area variance to be granted, as the benefit to the applicant of the area variance outweighs the determinants of health, safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood. The granting of the variance herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which, such variance shall become null and void.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve an area variance and a Secra resolution for 20 Oakland Avenue, presented by Member Ringwell. Do I, do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Nancy.
In favor?
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
Chairman Gallo.
In favor. That being completed, we wish you the best of luck, and don't come back and tell us that you had a problem.
No.
Yes.
Fifth?
No.
Fourth?
Fourth.
Okay, is item number four, 300B Columbus Avenue, a determination compatible with zone for a new chocolate shop? You're at the microphone. Kindly state your name and address for the record.
Sabrina Cedaram, 97, well, this.
No, your own address.
97 Marconi Avenue, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06606.
Okay, great. And you are here to present a request of us to make a determination as to whether your business is compatible. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you please describe your business?
It's going to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just address that, because this is something a little different than the board's usually seeing.
Sorry.
If that's okay with everybody.
Yes.
So, so bottom line is, what's happened here is, the applicant's before this board to seek a determination to whether her use is compatible in this district.
Yes.
And what happens is, is that if there's food served, sold, or prepared in a, in a establishment here, it's to be, it's, it's considered incompatible without proof that it is compatible. So that's basically what our code said. It's a little convoluted, so I'm trying to simplify it a little bit.
So it is incumbent on the applicant to do what?
To show proof that this, this is, this use is compatible with.
And how would the applicant know and be able to do that, to be honest with you?
Well, explain, explain the use, explain what she's going to be doing there, and then the board determines whether it's compatible with a retail store underneath with residences up above. Now, what happens is, the applicant is required to go to the planning board first, which she did, to seek a recommendation to come to this board. So the planning board looks at it. Here's the evidence that the applicant, and then has made a determination. What the planning board has done, they've basically strongly recommended to this board that this use is compatible.
So let me be clear, counsel, a little slower. So this applicant, you agree, has already been to the planning board?
That's correct.
Okay, so the applicant agrees that you've been there, and now our attorney is saying that our planning board has strongly recommended approval of this. Is that correct?
Or the compatibility of this use in that district.
Okay, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So now it's this board to actually determine the compatibility of the use per our code.
Did they have any comments regarding any reservations, or was simply, you know?
No, I, what happened at the meeting, they had, the builder was here of the building, and they, you know, the concerns were the noise, the smells of this, you know, chocolate and coffee, and the builder was here at the planning board meeting. He explained the barriers, the vapor barriers and everything that's used in the construction, and the type of construction, and basically assured that there would be no seepage of smells through, through the building. I'm not sure.
And just for the record, this is a, these are rented units that are still owned by the builder of the property?
The apartments upstairs.
Yes, the apartments above any sort of retail that's gonna go in at this location.
That's correct.
Are rented and run by the company who's gonna be responsible.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Please tell us about your business.
Okay, it's going to be a chocolate cafe, so I'll be serving coffee as well, prepared sandwiches, and breakfast pastries that will be brought in daily, but I'm gonna be...
Okay, okay, okay. Let me stop you. Okay, you say brought in, you know, it just happens that you're coming tonight, when we've had a intense conversation about.
Yeah.
The determination of brought in, so we would like some clarif... I, I personally would like some clarification.
Okay, they will be delivered in the morning.
From a factory bakery?
Yes.
Of your choice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and what will be made there will be my chocolate, and those are three-dimensional pieces.
Okay, go slow.
Bonbons.
Go slow, I'm a simple man, and maybe a little too simple. So, product is gonna come in from another bakery?
Correct.
But you're gonna make the chocolate?
Yes.
And you're gonna mix that chocolate with the product that is delivered?
No.
Are you gonna pour the chocolate on it? I mean, where does your chocolate fit in with what's being delivered?
My chocolate is my creation, so that is a standalone.
It's separate. So you may sell a croissant, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I hope.
But the croissant is not gonna, your chocolate is still gonna be something separate, something different?
Correct.
Are you making seashells or chocolate layers of some nature?
How do you know?
Shoes, masks.
How do you know?
I lived in Amsterdam. Chocolate shops were everywhere, so.
Yes.
Okay, and is this a variety of chocolate?
A complete variety of chocolate, and three-dimensional chocolates, and...
What does that mean?
It's...
I mean, it has no bearing on this decision.
How is chocolate? An actual boot, an actual Venetian mask made of chocolate and all the decorations.
And people eat that.
Edible, absolutely. I don't like to watch them eat it.
I've never eaten a boot.
Because it took me so long to make it, but yes, they eat it.
A boot. Have you ever eaten a boot? Have you ever eaten a boot? I've never eaten a boot.
Chocolate boots.
So was your intention mostly to just have walk-in, walk-out, or are you gonna have just a couple seats? Is that pretty much it?
I have, I think I'm gonna have maybe eight seats, nothing more than that.
And people are gonna be eating there mostly, just gonna be some coffee and one of your pre-made.
Correct.
Delivered croissants. Chocolate will probably devour somewhere else.
Yes, giftables.
Question to the building department. Why is this denied again? Remind us?
It's not because it's deemed in the zoning code that it's not compatible.
And so it is up to this board to determine whether the, this happens, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Williams.
First time.
But this is something that we have been faced with in the past, and we will be continually faced with, is determining whether the food services that are applied for residential have to be reviewed by this board to make a determination whether we would allow it. Would I be correct in saying that?
This district, yes.
Okay.
And the only, I'm sorry, the only, like, equipment you're essentially gonna have is coffee machines and kind of a chocolate warmer, is that what I understand?
Yeah.
There's gonna be no other baking?
Refrigeration.
Refrigeration. Is there gonna be any ovens in the store, or anything like that?
Toaster.
A toaster, okay. And then once she kind of actually builds everything, you know, you're gonna check that everything's at code and the proper ventilation. Yeah, okay. Okay, sorry.
Do you have dark chocolate?
Yes, lots.
Strawberries.
Okay, we appreciate that. I am gonna make a motion to open the public hearing for 300B Columbus Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Is anyone who would like to make, to make a comment about 300B Columbus Avenue, determination compatible with zone for the new chocolate shop? Seeing no one yet, would you like to come up to the microphone? Sure.
You wanna hear a couple of words about a design?
No. No, no, no. If the planning board is comfortable with that, that's generally good enough for us.
Does she have to go back to the planning board, just from my education?
Yes. Planning board?
Is she done with the planning board, or does she have to go back? It's nothing to do with what board goes on.
What happens is, the applicant, if it's approved by this board that this use is compatible with this district, then the applicant would go back to the planning board for site plan.
No, I just wanted to know from my education, you know, how the problem.
Yeah, no, it's, it's kind of a strange process.
A little convoluted, yep.
Under this, what do you call, section, the only thing that we're concerned about is, that falls into use here, would be the compatibility of use. That's it, period, right?
That's, that's exactly correct. You should, the board shall consider noise, smell, pollution, hours of operation, expected traffic hours.
There is.
Separate entrance is already done. That was when they built the building.
And at the planning meeting, the builder had no concerns about smell, or anything of that nature?
No.
Or safety, or any, no concerns were expressed?
No, and I think the applicant also provided the planning board the, the details about the warmer that she'd be using to melt the chocolate. I understand from the applicant that she's not gonna be making the chocolate there, she just melts chocolate and then creates the figures, or whatever she does.
Okay, but it's not considered a fire hazard, or anything? Okay, great.
Thank you, thank you for your information, and I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing on 300B Columbus. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, based on the information that has been forwarded to us, I would like to make a motion in the form of a resolution for the Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals Resolution. The applicant, Sabrina, oh boy.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry?
Cedaram.
Cedaram is seeking a determination from this board as to the compatibility of her proposed use of a coffee/chocolate cafe in the business residential zone, probably located 300 Columbus Avenue, New York, Section 42, Block 8, Lot 6, and she's seeking relief from the following section of the zoning code, 6 dash 2 dash 4, dot 4, sorry. Pursuant to 6 dash 2 dot 4 dot 3, this board shall review applications, from applications seeking commercial uses with residences above in the business residential zone. This board can approve the application if it deems the commercial use is compatible with such housing. Certain business uses, such as serving, preparing, and selling of food, shall normally be deemed incompatible without proof to the contrary by the applicant that the use is compatible. The applicant is, the applicant in this instance, in this instant application is seeking to build a coffee/chocolate cafe in the business residential zone. The applicant has stated there will be no cooking on the premises, and that she will sell coffee, chocolates, baked goods, and prepackaged sandwiches. The applicant will create chocolate figures on the premises by using a chocolate warmer to melt the chocolate, boots included. The applicant made an initial application to the planning board and received from the said board a strong recommendation that the applicant's use would be compatible with the district. If to hear in the applicant, and proof provided by the applicant, this board agrees with the planning board, that the use is compatible within the business residential district. Included in this is a Secra resolution, based on the application to... district. Included in this is a secret resolution. Based on the application submitted, the zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, number one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECR and its implementation regulation, regulations. Number two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed application. Number three, that the action here, taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that the negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. The application for the sep, for the applicant to construct a coffee slash chocolate cafe at 300 Columbus Avenue is approved as to the use proposed by the applicant is, uh, completable with the, compatible with the business residential zone. Okay, I have moved this resolution in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Nancy, please call the roll.
Member Ringwald.
Approved.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Jackman. Chairman Gallo.
Approved with a boot, yes.
Wow.
Well, bring it up here, we wanna see it. Everyone wants to see it, that's, oh. Well, wow, is that, it's red.
It's chocolate, and it's edible glitter.
How is it red?
Edible glitter.
Wow. Welcome to the Village of Tuckahoe.
Welcome, yeah. Look forward to tasting your chocolate.
Good luck, get to work.
Will on that boot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we've heard, um, Fisher and Oakland and 300 Columbus, and I really want to, uh, thank, um, uh, the applicants. I wanna thank the Building Department and the, uh, uh, League of Department. Uh, it, it has been actually a more difficult night than, uh, some may, uh, understand. Obviously, the chocolate was, and the, uh, was easy, but we are wrestling with, uh, Martine's. So, this board will, I just want the public to know this, the board will continue to work diligently. And as I said, I will not be here in December, but I will be back in January, and I'm sure the board will, Member Scouso has assured me that he'll be here then. So, we will have a vibrant meeting in, uh, December, and then I will see, uh, everyone in, uh, January. Is there any comments anyone would like to make before we close?
Nope.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to close the, uh, Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals on, uh, November 11th, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
November the 4th.
On November 4th, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tuckahoe.